Welcome to the business meetings for Wednesday, November 4th, 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call please, Lee.
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Skorjic?
Present.
Councilwoman Resnety?
Present.
Councilwoman Riley?
Present.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Present.
Councilman Burns?
Present.
Councilman Strawn?
Present.
And President Scanlon.
Present.
That's all seven here.
Thank you. I know approval of minutes from October 21st, 2020 business meeting. October 27th, 2020 special business meeting. And October 29th, special business meeting, 2020.
This is Councilwoman Friedman. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I apologize. I have a correction, but I did not mean to interrupt. I apologize, Councilwoman Strawn.
Go ahead.
Oh, my name is Miss in one of the documents, so.
Okay. We'll make sure that's corrected.
Um, can you tell me which sets the minutes that is?
Yeah, again, I'm sorry. I think I'm interrupting again. I apologize. But in the business meeting minutes for October 21st, in item nine, um, my last name is misspelled.
Okay, we'll make that correction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with the.
So the motion to approve the minutes, I'm sorry, this is Sharon, would be as amended.
As amended.
Okay. Yep, uh, for October 21st. Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I ask Councilwoman Resnety's approval of the amendments as amended from the October 21st, 2020 business meeting, the October 27th, 2020 special business meeting, and the October 29th, 2020 special meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone to oppose? Nobody to oppose, alright. I believe we're on the public comment now. Um, again, uh, Lee, can you please state the name of the person calling, their exact address, and announce at the city council, we hear clearly? And, uh, to the people calling in, you have five minutes to speak. Please be respectful. No vulgar language, please, and, uh, we'll start taking the calls. Lee can announce the number for the calling, please. By the way, Lee, did you get any write-ins? Did anybody write you for the public comment session tonight?
Uh, no, we didn't receive any, uh, emails or letters.
Okay, alright, great. Then go ahead and announce the number, please.
Okay, so that number to call in tonight for the public comment is area code 607-772-7101. You're here for a public comment? Okay, perfect. Okay, I'll put you through. Okay, this is John Solak, 8 later.
Hello, little history lesson. Uh, why do you have the business meetings on Wednesday? Uh, for the entire city's history, they were on Monday. How did that? That occur? Well, uh, you may remember the city council meetings of old, uh, highly rated on cable TV. Uh, dozens of people attending and speaking. And, uh, the Monday night before an election, uh, was always a contentious, uh, meeting. Council presidents back then had a switch on their hands on the switch, talking about electioneering. But a guy named Bob Westler, uh, who was a regular speaker counsel, then went on to serve at city council. Uh, he got mad that every four years, members of the public, uh, could, uh, speak, uh, before an election. And he alone, uh, shepherded that. It's an interesting, interesting, uh, historical occurrence. Uh, I don't know if that's right, if you're paying six, uh, a million eight hundred thousand for dental. That's, that's, that's what it looks like to me. I don't know if that's right. Uh, another resolution that you have, and you know, you really should, if you look at the old books in the 60s and the 70s, uh, when resolutions were put out there, uh, they had a great deal of information. Uh, you're, uh, got a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar legal bill for something. You don't say what it is or who it's going to. And, uh, I think you should, certainly you should, uh, it's not there, but the public needs to know where that one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is going, what law for, uh, where's it going, and, uh, what case it's for. Uh, that's only fair. Uh, Mayor was on, uh, he now, on WMEF this morning, he now claims that the arsonist, uh, that destroyed the handicap playground equipment, uh, tried to, uh, burn the carousel down. Now, uh, this is a little bit of a change from what he has said all along. And I was the only person that I know of that offered a thousand dollar reward for information to solve that. I believe it has to be solved. Uh, but no one else, uh, seems to, uh, want to engage in that. I posted a video that was provided to me by a citizen in Binghamton, and which he talked to a gentleman, uh, that said that he did it. And this gentleman is clearly identifiable to anybody. Uh, he said that he, uh, was given a Molotov cocktail, something like that, and threw it, and that he wasn't the first one. So, if I've uncovered some information, and I'm not working on this full-time, and, uh, uh, it, it would seem to me, uh, that, uh, the council, uh, who eagerly paid off, I believe you, the money comes again. The mayor said it was insured. Well, it's your self-insurance, isn't it? Uh, if it's, uh, an insurance company, I'd like to know the name of who paid the claim. But you, you all should be, uh, wanting to solve what is the largest arson of city property ever to occur. If, uh, one of the largest arsons, uh, that has occurred in terms of dollar amount, uh, in the city of Binghamton. Uh, so you should be, uh, joining me, uh, offering an award for the arrest, conviction, incarceration of the perpetrators. And, uh, it's amazing how we forgot all this. We just went into city funds.
John, you have one minute.
And, uh, donations were raised, and this thing was, and my original objection, if you look at the record, it's interesting. Because when I was objecting to the construction of this, I pointed out that those might not be flame retardant materials, that they might be dangerous. And voila, uh, there you have it. So try to work on those things. Tell me it's six million dollars for dental, uh, for the city of Binghamton. Uh, tell me, uh, who the, uh, the legal fees are going to and what matter it concerns. And, uh, work on finding the perpetrators of those arson. Rick Park, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that number again to call in is 772-7101. Hi, you're here for public comment? Okay, what's your name and address? Okay. Okay, this is Tina Kranopoulos. She lives at 37 Laurel.
Hi, good evening. Um, last Thursday evening, which was the 29th of October, you all met to discuss and vote on the city budget. You immediately voted no, four of you did anyway, on opening up for discussion, specific pages of the budget. Let me be clear, you voted no on discussing these pages before you even knew what Councilwoman Freeman wanted to talk about. You could easily have voted yes to open up a discussion and then no on actually accepting, accepting any amendment. But no, you have to be reactionary and work in total contradiction to what transparency means it looks like. Basically, you are telling your constituents that you do not care about our opinion and that you can do as you please. It's disingenuous and flies on the face of an engaged process that you claim to be part of, with some of you even having the gall to say that you respect different viewpoints, and yet you move so fast to shut down even the possibility of taking into account the feedback that you received during public comments, but I can't even blink. At the same meeting last Thursday, the president of this council made two claims. First, he said that I assume some of those callers during public comments were from two political organizations in town who are anti-police. I'm not sure which organizations exactly you had in mind, but I can assure you that none of them are political organizations. The Broom County Republican Party is a political organization. Citizen Action for Justice and Unity for the Southern Tier are community organizations. It's an important distinction. Second, council president went on to say that everyone in his district is pro-police. That claim is that best misinformation and at worst a lie. I know several people who live in your district and they are not pro-police. I'm not really sure why you said that. And if this is what you truly believe, I must say that you are not engaging with your constituents in a meaningful way, or perhaps you are only looking to hear from those who think like you. Also last Thursday, Councilwoman Resonity talked about how she disagreed with how some viewpoints are coming through and other viewpoints are not coming through. She then went on to say that she had heard from many folks who are afraid of going on the record as pro-police. It's almost as though, after a majority of folks expressed criticism of the police, you want to go in and change the record after the fact. Public comment is public comment. If people have strong pro-police feelings, they should make themselves heard. Although, given how you have taken on the mantle of being pro-police, they need not really worry. Further, you claim that people are afraid of repercussions if they make their support of the police hurt. That may well be the case. However, I have yet here you taking issue with people calling into council and making racist comments. In other words, it seems to me that you are more comfortable protecting those who support the police or are afraid of Antifa or some kind of red communist menace than listening to or protecting your constituents when they tell you that they have concerns about the police. And let me tell you what's really intimidating. It's knowing that folks in city hall are keeping tabs on how many phone requests I make, and then calling me out to public for doing so. If anything, I should be the one who is afraid of being persecuted for trying to hold accountable the Binghamton Police Department and the city. In sum, I'd like to ask you to be a bit more nuanced in the way that you present things. Some of you on council have a tendency to use very divisive language, which, I mean, given when we look at the bigger picture, I'm not surprised that you do this, but it is kind of disappointing and very sad to see it happen in a small city like Binghamton. You go about calling people either being pro-police or anti-police. I hear very few of you talking about being pro-people, let alone being pro-people of color or being pro-people who are workers, essential workers, who drive our buses, who are nurses, who are postal delivery people, and who are teachers. Just as the mayor, some of you seem more interested in sowing divisions and throwing your fellow council members onto the bus than actually doing the hard work of governing. The verb govern comes from the Latin uber nare, which means to steer a vessel and eventually means to direct rule to govern. Now, if you think about steering a vessel, you might imagine yourself at the back of it rather than at the front. And in order to be able to steer it well, you need assistance from your crew. You need to listen to them, you need to cooperate with them, and you need to have an understanding of the context in which you are sailing. If you only listen to one set of voices on your ship, you will spin in circles for eternity and never make it to your harbor. Which, again, given the bigger picture, is not surprising. You don't really seem to want to create or be part of meaningful change for everyone in this city. Instead, you seem to want to cling to power and push through an agenda that favors those who voted for you and look like you, and leaves everyone else standing in the rain. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that number again to call in is 772-7101. Hi, you're here for public comment? What is your full name and address? I'll put you through. Okay, this is Tarek Abdalzim at 17 Tremont.
Good evening. I wanted to, uh, call and share some similar disappointment to the last caller. In the entire Republican, uh, slate that just shut down any conversation or the opportunity for other council members to revisit some investments across city pages, city departments, that would honor and reflect the feedback that they heard from community. But I want to talk also about the comments made by President Scanlon and Councilwoman Resonity. And I think they failed miserably to even hear and address some of the concerns in this community. I gave these examples last time, and I want to revisit them because I think they're very helpful in kind of exposing the shortcomings of your responses and the way you, the Republicans intentionally framed this conversation. Before the ADA Act, our transportation investments focused on roads and roads only. We know that we have now changed the way we are investing in our transportation systems to accommodate people of all mobilities, all abilities, and all users. We had bike lanes. We make sure that pedestrians are safe. We use ADA crosswalks. We have people with, who are vision impaired that can navigate downtown because of changes we've made to accommodate lived experience and, again, other ability. Imagine if in those who were first bringing these concerns to council members like you and other elected officials, folks in wheelchairs, folks who are vision impaired, and you all just said, "Well, I respect your opinion, but there are many people in my district who believe our roads are working just fine." So, goodbye, because it's basically what you're doing. Let me give you a second example. Again, women in the workplace, 70s, 80s, and 90s, obviously well before that, victim of abuse, sexism, patriarchy, denied opportunities, paid less, harassment, etc., right? Imagine if in the 80s, a bunch of women at a large firm went to the boss, and so we are all experiencing incredible harassment. And the boss said, "You know, I respect your opinions, but I hear many other opinions from my male supervisors that are quite different." In fact, what I think we just need to do is rebuild trust between male supervisors and women beneath them. That's what we just have to do. We just have to rebuild trust. Because that's the only real solution that Republicans have offered when a large contingency of this population, black, brown, white, but predominantly black and brown, who are not served by the approach in which we use to address public safety. Right? The system does not accommodate them. It is not meeting their needs. They do not feel safe. In fact, they feel harmed. Those who are homeless, those who are suffering from addiction, those who are suffering from mental health issues, those who are suffering from poverty, they're being helped by the criminalization of their lived experience and then being pursued in a punitive manner by police officers. Right? But your only response is to say, "Your opinions, I hear them, but I'm trusting other opinions." If you were to say that to women who talk about harassment, you would be laughed out of your seat. We have made structural changes. We've, we've passed sexual harassment policies. We've created accountability mechanisms. We've offered, not nationally, quite a disgrace, but family leave, maternity leave. We've created nursing station rooms, so women who, oh, just have a child can actually trust. So like, we've literally changed our entire workplace environment to accommodate these needs. What are you going to do to change the investments in community safety after you've heard from so many constituents that it's not serving their needs and in fact it's harming them? The question is, what are you going to do? Because just calling it opinions is incredibly dismissive and, and disregards their lived experience. To say the only solution is just to rebuild trust between the police and the community is so lack of, uh, it's just extreme lack of imagination that you're just not addressing the real challenges. So what I thought was a really reasonable.
Your time is up.
Proposal by Councilwoman Friedman, y'all just didn't even want to hear it.
Hey, his time's up. Please hang up on him.
Your time's up.
My time's up. Thank you.
Okay, that number again to call in is 772-7101.
Lee, announce that number one more time before we move on, please.
One last time, that, the phone number to call in is 772-7101.
Alright, Lee, let's conclude the public comment section. And Lee, you had something that was, uh, we need to move on here also?
Yes, we have the proposed 2021 calendar that we spoke about in the work session. I think you can kick it over to Councilwoman Resnety.
Alright, Councilwoman Resnety, please.
I'd like to make a motion through the proposed 2021 city council meeting schedule, with the understanding the city council intends to amend the start time of the business meeting from 6:30 to 6:00 PM.
This is Sharon. I apologize for the interruption, but I think there's a technical difficulty. I believe Councilwoman Riley has been trying to be heard for about 60 seconds.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we hear you.
I said point of clarification.
Yes, go ahead.
I thought we were kicking this to the next business meeting so we could have, um, corresponding legislation to amend the charter as well. Was that not what we discussed on Monday?
Um, Sharon, can you answer that? Apparently this came from Ken. We need to approve this tonight. Sharon, can you respond to that, please?
Yes, the corresponding legislation I believe Councilwoman Riley is referring to relates to the time of the meeting. The time of the meeting is in the code currently scheduled for 6:30. This, which I believe that there was going to be more discussion on switching the time from 6:30 to 6:00. So I think there's some acknowledgement that that time change may happen. However, council members need to approve the actual schedule, i.e. the dates of the council meetings coming up so that our departments can begin to coordinate with, uh, Broom County Security um, on dates for the 2021 cycle. So you don't need legislation to, um, deal with the actual dates for when council meetings are scheduled, just the time, if that makes sense.
Correct. However, the document as submitted has the times as amended. Look at the top.
Right, so we're approving this pending city council approving the, uh, 6:00 PM.
We're approving the date only and not the la, the language at the top.
Correct, not the times. This is with the understanding that there's going to be a discussion as to times and any legislation regarding that I imagine would be in about two weeks. But with regards to a motion to approve the schedule, it's the schedule as to the dates.
Thank you.
Yep, thank, no, and thank you for the question.
Should we start over again? So, I'll bounce this over again.
George, go ahead.
Motion to approve the proposed 2021 city council meeting schedule, with the understanding the city council intends to amend the start time of the business meeting from 6:30 PM to 6:00 PM to be consistent with the start time of the work session.
Also, let me, let me jump in here. Ms. Torkin, I saw your email on the date, um, would you like to change the Monday meeting to a Tuesday? We can certainly address that when, uh, the next work session. We, we certainly can accommodate those dates too. There's no issue there. So we'll, we'll do that at that point unless, we need to do it right now.
Mr. President, it looks like it's already been changing. That was that change from the 20th, 21st, I think. Wasn't it?
Lee, was that changed, Lee?
Yes, the changes that were discussed today over email, I implemented those in the proposed calendar in front of you.
Okay, good. Alright, so we're all set. Thank you.
And I thank council, um, on behalf of my office, but also on behalf of the Jewish residents of the city for accommodating our high holidays.
George, no issue there.
So that motion needs a second?
Second.
It's a roll call, Sharon, I believe?
Yes, please.
Roll call, please, Lee.
Uh, Councilman Skorjic?
Aye.
Councilwoman Resnety?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strawn?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's seven I's, zero N's.
Okay, let's move on to the preferred agenda now. Introductory ordinance 20-96, Consider Finance, Councilman Strawn, please.
Well, actually, I can introduce them if you'd like.
Yeah, Lee, go ahead.
This is the preferred agenda.
Yep, go ahead, Lee.
Right. Okay, so the first item on tonight's.
I'm sorry, but before we do that, um, does anybody wish to remove anything from the preferred agenda? Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. So, for the preferred agenda, the first item tonight is introductory ordinance 20-96, Considered in Finance. And it's an ordinance to amend the 2020 Binghamton-Johnson City Joint Sewage Treatment Facilities budget to increase the appropriations for property insurance and furniture.
Are there comments on this? Sharon, we can approve these as a whole, correct?
That's correct. You can take a, a motion to approve at the end by, and then a roll call.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Lee, proceed, please.
So the second item is introductory ordinance 20-97, Considered in Finance. This is an ordinance to amend the 2020 Building Equipment and Improvement Maintenance Budget for lighting repairs and cleaning services.
Comments? Go ahead, Lee.
Next, we have introductory ordinance 20-98, Considered in Finance. This is an ordinance to amend the 2020 Risk Management Budget for Legal Services.
Comments on this? Okay, Lee, proceed.
Next, we have introductory resolution 20-102, Considered in Employees Committee. This is a resolution authorizing Mayor to enter into a contract with Excelsus Blue Cross for dental and vision administration.
Comments on 20-102? Okay, Lee?
Next, we have introductory resolution 20-103, Considered in Finance. This is a resolution to amend Permanent Resolution 20-85 to increase funding for business. This is a resolution to amend permanent resolution 20-85 to increase funding for businesses.
Comments on 20-103? Okay, Lee.
Next is introductory resolution 20-104, considered in the Public Works at Parks Recreation Committee, and this is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter into an agreement with DASNY for $250,000 grant for various improvements and maintenance projects at Ross Park.
Comments on this? Okay, Lee, read the last one, please.
Yes, and the last one is introductory resolution 20-105, considering the MPA Committee. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with the county union for coordinated entry system.
Comments on this, please?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the preferred agenda. Second.
Kaylee, roll call, please.
Councilman Skrenji?
Aye.
Councilwoman Resnety?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Okay, and the comments from council members. I believe we left off with Councilwoman Riley, so we'll start with Councilwoman Friedman tonight, please.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. This has been quite an interesting few weeks with election day and with early voting, and I just want to commend the residents of our community for their unprecedented outpouring of early voting. That's so awesome. I, I think early voting is an excellent way to increase the accessibility of elections for people, because having them just on one day is not always, that doesn't always work out for everyone. So I'm so thrilled that New York has instated or has kept early voting, and I also want to say that while we are eagerly awaiting the results of the election, I urge everyone to be patient, as patient as possible, understanding that because of these unprecedented circumstances with a, you know, due to the pandemic, there are a lot of mail-in ballots and absentee ballots, way more than we normally would receive. So I want to thank the Board of Elections, who has been working overtime. They have been doing an amazing job. My voting experience went off without a hitch, so I'm excited to see the results of the election, and I'm also really excited that we get to see our democracy at work in this way. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And the Councilman Strong, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know a lot tonight, just echo what Councilwoman Friedman said, just thank you, you know, for everybody participating in the process and, you know, it's, 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 you know, it is what it is, but a lot of people spoke and, and I hope that, that every vote is counted properly, and I do appreciate the hard work of the elections people. Obviously, New York is a long, a long day for a lot of them, so I really appreciate that. Stay safe and enjoy this nice, nice weather that's coming up over the next week or so before winter sets in, so take care.
Thank you, Councilman. And the Councilman Burns, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm glad the election is almost over. The, I don't like, even though I used the signs for my own election, you know, I guess locally you have to do that to get your name out, there are some municipalities that don't allow them. I would actually vote for that if that ever came up around here, if any, if I could get others to go in on it with me before we put it through or whatever, but, you know, I mentioned it only because, you know, I have neighbors, and they're going to put their sign up, and then I'm going to put my sign up, and this sign up, and, oh yeah, well, I got two signs, and we're such a divided country that, you know, I just want to remind people that everybody on my street, you chose my street, I chose this street, chose this city, and we all want the same thing, really. You know, we want a safe city for everybody, we want equity for everybody, we want, you know, our garbage picked up, we want our streets paved. Anyway, I'm, and I know that I'm on a committee that everybody feels the same way, so I'm proud of that, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you in the next year and, and I'm glad the signs are going to be gone soon. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. And the Councilman Skrenji, please.
Nothing to report, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman. And the Councilwoman Resnety, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Not really much to report. I echo a whole lot of what just said. It's been a long week, and some of us are excited and nervous and tired, but in the end, we are one people, and I hope that we're able to continue to come together. With that, have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And the Councilwoman Riley, please.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to echo the sentiments of all of my fellow councilmen, that we have had a pretty serious few months, you know, COVID with a pandemic that took over 200,000 lives, and amidst the pandemic, we still had an overwhelming turnout in terms of the vote, not only in early voting, but in the return of absentee vote. So it's critical that we remain positive and we allow our process to do its perfect work. We ensure that all votes are counted, including the absentee ballots like mine, because those people, the people that submitted absentees, were working to flatten the curve, and their vote did, I mean, their voice needs to be heard as well. I wanted to just shout out the firemen, the fire department. I thought something happened to my, well, to a hydrant in front of my house. They came on over quickly and fixed the problem that at the end could have been done by me, but I appreciate them and their timeliness, because I didn't want our children, my child, to put leaves in it, you know, how they try to do pranks. Nevertheless, I want to thank them for their responsiveness. I also want to encourage you guys, as we celebrate the last few warm days, as Councilman Strong brought up, to think about, we are about to approach a few holidays, and I work with a few organizations that have been partnering with residents of Binghamton that live in transitional housing. I'm not sure how many of you have ever visited the, oh, of course, now I can't remember the name, but there's a few hotels that residents are placed in until a secure home is found. And if you've not visited, then you don't understand what is happening in our city. I encourage you guys to, once I, once we leave this meeting, I can share those hotels with you, and if you feel so compelled to assist with some of the needs while these residents are in transition. Again, they need help now, but as we approach the holidays, there may be more needs. So I want us to continue to work together to help everyone in our community as one voice, as was mentioned earlier. Again, I thank you guys. That concludes my updating report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Riley. Just a couple of things for me. There's still some streets on my side of town which are built up, ready to be paved, that the plants traditionally fail open till around Thanksgiving, depending on the weather, so if you have a street built up on your side of town, they will not leave it like that. The city will make sure it gets paved, so the snowplows can get up and down it, and we're safe to drive on it. There's a house, which I've been telling the, my fellow council members about, on 12 Gaylord, which was rained yesterday, and the neighbors were awfully excited. Matter of fact, they were out there at a picnic table, eating lunch and watching this place be demolished, so if you ever, if you have a house in your district, it literally, it's gone by the end of the day, and it's, the lot has smoothed out and no, you wouldn't even know a house was there, so I'm very happy for that. The neighbors got their wish down there. And I believe I'll take a motion to adjourn now.
One more, second.
Second.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.